For seventeenth, regular scheduled meeting, before we begin the meeting, we will ask for a motion and a second to approve the special emergency meeting to discuss one item. Do I have a motion to approve the meeting?
Motion.
Second.
Been motion by member Chavez, second by member Soria, roll call please.
Councilmember Brettafield.
Yes.
Councilmember Chavez.
Yes.
Councilmember Sparza. Councilmember Karbasi.
Aye.
Councilmember Soria.
Yes.
Council Vice President Capriolio. President Arias.
Yes.
Five two accent.
All right, so with that, we'll begin the special meeting notice, the special meeting called this morning at nine o'clock. As to consider resolution requesting Governor Newsom provide relief to restaurants by facilitating the return to indoor dining. As soon as possible and to authorize outdoor dining to continue even after indoor dining is advised. With that, I will tell the council member Chavez, you have the floor.
Thank you. This resolution, which is what we've been working on for the past couple of weeks with the city, the county, the California Restaurant Association and various different business owners. Obviously, we know and see the trends and the numbers going down. Speaking with the county public health folks yesterday, the data showing we're going to be opening up here pretty soon. But we know that it's not going to be enough for our businesses. We know that the capacity numbers have been very difficult for them to actually, you know, turn a profit and keep their business going. So what this really does is it does a couple of things. One, it codifies the work that we've been doing with the city, the county, the public health folks, and then the state. There have been numerous conversations going on behind the scenes, so to speak, with the state as well and their public health folk. And so I'm pretty confident that we're going to get that variance. But we wanted to send a message that the city of Fresno, one, has been working diligently with the county, with the state, and with our neighboring city that we're going to be making an announcement here at one, 1:30 PM, I think today, in the form of a press conference. And really speaking with one voice united, really, really working towards that goal. And I know many of you have had these conversations with your small businesses. I spent the last part of four hours last night talking to a lot of the small businesses and not just in my district, but across the city. And so we know that this is something that they're going to be working with us to ensure that we open up, but we do it in a, in a safe manner that abides by all local and state guidelines. And we want to make sure that we're thoughtful and strategic about how we go about having that conversation. So the letter, the resolution itself caps with the letter that the mayor and the county chair are going to be sending to the governor and asking for that variance. I believe we're going, we're going to get it. But going forward, I think we need to have a template and a format as to how we monitor the local data that's coming out of our local hospitals and adjust accordingly. Many of the businesses have already agreed to abide by those CDC guidelines and local public and state health initiatives. And so we want to make sure that we're a partner in that conversation. And so with that, I will make the motion to approve this resolution.
Second by Capriolio.
Arias.
Council President.
You're muted.
You're muted, Council President.
All right, Council Vice President, I'll go to you first and then go to member Karbasi.
I just want to let you know that I'm on board. My phone wasn't working perfect this morning when you initially called the meeting and I would second that motion and totally a hundred percent support it and the hard work that's gone into it by our colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Karbasi.
Thank you, Mr. President. So if you're watching and you're a business owner in the city of Fresno, big or small, I want you to know that my colleagues and I and the mayor who worked on this bill, we hear your pain, we feel your pain. My family business, which has existed for forty-one years in the city of Fresno, has never been closed this long. We are still closed. We've taken a serious hit in our income and I know how hard that is for everyone out there. We, if we could, take more drastic measures, would. But the reality is that we have to do whatever it takes to get us open safely and as soon as possible to alleviate the financial strain it has on Fresno's families that are in the small business community. But we take this very seriously. Even if you don't call us or talk to us directly, we do hear you and we feel your pain and we're doing everything we can. We have another bill being introduced later today at the regular meeting. The Business is Essential to Local Economies Act that is going to help restaurants as well through this pandemic. So we thank you for being patient. So many of you have played by the rules and you've been suffering, but we are doing everything we can, whether it's a Save Our Small Businesses grant, the bill coming up today, or this current bill to alleviate your pain. Thank you so much for being patient and thanks to my colleagues and the mayor for working with me on this.
Thank you. With that, do we have any other speakers before we go to the public on this item? Councilmember Brettafield.
Yeah, look, first of all, I respect my colleagues. I think we all want the same thing ultimately, to have businesses open. But I also believe it's very important to be honest and transparent with our constituents. This resolution basically says three things. The council hereby requests Governor Newsom to continue to improve upon the state program by providing restaurants a more realistic pathway to return to indoor dining as soon as soon and as safely as possible. Changes nothing from what's going on now. It's about opening indoor dining as soon as safely as possible. Two, the city is prepared to facilitate safe indoor dining in consultation with the state and public health guidelines as directed by the Fresno County Public Health Department. Okay, that's going on now, it's been going on all along. And three, the council further affirms the request by the California Restaurant Association to authorize restaurants to continue outdoor dining per current standard. Once indoor dining is again allowed. Okay, they're doing outdoor dining and you're hopeful that the governor at some point will allow indoor dining. Wonderful. The resolution does nothing. All it says is we would like people to eventually return when it's safe, when it's possible. Basically, again, giving all the direction, all the power to Governor Newsom with his four-colored tier system. And everyone's feeling the pressure because it's been six months and the business owners have had it. And they're saying, we can't do this anymore, we're going to open up. And so the council, in an effort to appear like it's doing something, is saying, okay, we're going to codify in writing what is already exists. Nothing has changed. Now I have on the agenda, which probably won't see the light of day, I hope it does, real action, which is to open up a resolution that says, open up the restaurants today, today, following the CDC guidelines. Open. We don't go to Newsom, we're not on our knees, we're not begging. The city of Fresno is saying, open, every business can open following CDC guidelines. That's what my resolution says. And it says the code enforcement will cease fining businesses. That's my resolution, that's what we're supposed to hear today. That's action. This resolution has no action other than a letter, I guess, that will be sent to Governor Newsom, where people from the county, the mayor, the city council, and I guess they're hoping to get some Fresno County Public Health officials to sign off on this letter, which they haven't done yet, that's why it wasn't done yesterday, begging Governor Newsom to open up and take his, his boot off the neck of restaurants and nail salons and other businesses that are closed. So it's again saying, we're all together, we're working in this together, we're all in this together, but we're not all in this together because we all get our checks and have been for the last six months. But businesses are not. And so this resolution does nothing, nothing, other than to say, to give a head fake to our constituents like we're doing something. But the reality is we're doing nothing. We can do something later today if we support my resolutions, which is to open up businesses and to file a lawsuit against Governor Newsom. So the schools, churches, restaurants, and all the businesses that he shut down will open. I want to be very clear, this is nothing but a mirage, a smokescreen, a head fake to our constituents that your representatives are doing something. They're not. And this codifies nothing but the status quo. Everyone, unfortunately, elected leaders, bureaucrats, have bowed down before Newsom with this arbitrary authoritarian unconstitutional edicts that started with a fourteen-day flatten the curve, went to a roadmap, a dimmer switch, now a four-colored tier system, and all you have is devastation over six months. We now have the six-month anniversary of the fourteen-day flatten the curve. So I'm not going to support this resolution because this is a resolution that supports big government, taking away people's freedoms, their rights to make a living, and getting on our hands and knees and going to Newsom and saying, please, please, we need you to open up. Even though his four-colored tier, four-tier system will not allow it. Even if you move into the next stage, it doesn't allow them to fully open up and they have to stay in that for three weeks. Why? Just arbitrarily, these are the things, the goalposts always constantly change. So my colleagues, I ask you to support real efforts to open up the businesses. If you support the resolutions that I put forward today, the businesses will get a message from City Hall that they can open up today, following the CDC guidelines. Following CDC guidelines today. This does nothing. It creates an impression we're doing something, we're doing nothing. And later at one o'clock, you'll all hold hands and send a letter, and I hope you send a box of chocolates too, and maybe, maybe he will do something for our constituents. Because at this point, all he's done is put them out of work and caused tremendous suffering. So I'm not going to be able to support this head fake and mirage.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Chavez, Karbasi, and Dennis Sparza.
Yeah, no, thank you. Totally respect, you know, other colleagues' opinions, but I also believe in being transparent and truthful. And here's the truth for all the business owners. What Councilmember Brettafield is referencing does absolutely nothing for your business, but put you in jeopardy of losing your ABC license and your state accreditation. And if we take down our businesses down that path, because they tried this down in Southern California, a lot of those businesses that went that route were not able to come back and open back up when they did allow for indoor dining. And so we don't want to set our businesses up for later consequences. Even if we removed everything that was just discussed, this is a state mandate, right? I want to make sure that people understand what this actually is and what it, what it actually is. And so I understand the frustration, I hear that from my business owners, I hear that from our constituents, but we also have a responsibility to work. We're not individuals, you know, that have discretion over our own jurisdiction. We are a body, that is a democratic representative government. We're all entitled to our opinions, but we're not entitled to our facts. And the facts are that there have been a lot of work going on behind the scenes with associations that represent thousands of restaurants across the city, with individuals that represent a lot of constituents, not just in the city of Fresno, but in Fresno County, and trying to speak with one voice. So I want to make sure that our business owners understand this. Those initiatives that my colleagues are referencing will not solve your problem. They will actually make it worse because they will bring down enforcement from the state of California that will jeopardize your business long term. And I don't want to do that. I want to be truthful and upfront with my constituents. We have two very specific examples of that happening. One is the gentleman that owns a restaurant up north. What happened to him when he tried to open up without any provisions or local guidelines? Two is the school that tried to open up arbitrarily. They even sued. The judge just ruled that that is not allowed. And so we, we're setting up these businesses and entities to fail and I'm not going to do that. Now, it's easier to do a press conference and point out the obvious, the problems, and everything that's wrong with the situation. We all know that, that's stating the obvious. But what we need to focus on and what our responsibility is, is to focus on solution. We don't do that by just arbitrarily saying, we're going to do this or we're going to do that. We're a representative body and majority rules here and in the county and in the state. And I think the better route is to actually work with our county public health folks, work with our business associations, and work with the representatives that actually want to find solutions to this problem. So I just want to make sure that we're being transparent and honest. It's much easier to just do a press conference and we could do a press con, I could do ten thousand press conferences if I felt that that would solve the problem, but that's not how it works. We have guidelines, we have to work within these boundaries, we have to work within these parameters. I don't personally like a lot of them and I've been on the record at saying that. But I understand that that's how our form of government works. And so I want to be very truthful and upfront and honest with our business owners, with our constituents. That is not the way to get things done. Here's the truth, we're going to open up here pretty shortly, likely early next week, middle next week. And along those lines, we're going to have to go through this conversation of what these openings look like with capacity percentages, with outdoor, with indoor dining. That is a conversation that we're going to have down this road. And I totally understand and I agree with what some of what Councilmember Brettafield said. There are businesses that are dying on the vine, is the exact quote that I got from them last night. But let's work together, let's focus, and it's not about holding hands. I don't want to hold anybody's hands, by the way, but I do want to get to a solution. And the solution is to work with our bodies, work within the system that we have, and get those solutions for our business owners. Thank you.
You, Councilmember Karbasi, and Dennis Sparza.
I think what had to be said was said by Councilmember Chavez, thank you.
Councilmember Sparza and then Mayor Lee Bren.
Thank you. So, you know, I can certainly appreciate where this resolution is coming from. Restaurants and I would say businesses altogether have taken a hit, not just here in Fresno, but really everywhere. So I'll remind everyone that this is a widespread issue that isn't specific just to us here locally. Restaurants and, and being able to dine together, I mean, really are at the heart of the human experience. But I would say that the harsh reality is that COVID-19 has made it unsafe to dine indoors, while the valley heat and the air quality from wildfires has made it unsafe to dine outdoors as well. And so, you know, the very nature of dining, the eating, the drinking, the socializing, the laughing amongst each other, I mean, and this is all without being able to wear a mask, is not an activity that's conducive to containing the spread of COVID-19. So, you know, it's really a series of natural disaster that has dealt us this hand, not the government. It's the pandemic that has accelerated and amplified this recession that we're in, not the government. I will also remind my colleagues that we've seen this story play out before. I had previously called for shelter in place to go until at least May thirty-first. But this city government, along with the state and other jurisdictions, began to fold under the pressure and sent the message that things were open before the end of May, when we really hadn't made any progress that warranted that direction. And this was all happening at the very same time that this country was hitting a hundred thousand deaths. So months later, I think it's extremely unfortunate that I'm able to sit here today and say that I told you so. Because we saw skyrocketing cases all summer long, our healthcare workers are exhausted, and we're going to be hitting two hundred thousand deaths any day now. So I don't think we should be patting ourselves on the back and trying to loosen restrictions because of a slight decline in cases here locally, especially as we're headed into the, the fall, both with the flu and not knowing what a potential second wave of COVID looks like for the valley. The governors created this tiered system and other counties in California have shown that it is possible to move from the purple tier that we're currently in into the less restrictive red tier, which we actually seem to be on the verge of achieving according to the latest numbers. So I, I think we should stop pretending that these benchmarks are impossible to meet when there are places in California, in this country, even throughout the world, who show that it can be done. You know, when it comes to keeping our cases down here in our community, I think we've been our own worst enemy. And the fact that we're even having this debate today is a reflection of that. You know, having the attitude that it won't happen to us, I think is precisely why it happens to us. And so I'd like to see us be smart about it this time around, smarter about it this time around and not, you know, repeat the mistakes of the past, of the very recent past, despite how much we've learned. But the last appeal I want to make is directly to the residents of our city. Just because you can't dine in doesn't mean that food is canceled. You know, I dine out in terms of takeout, delivery, and I know Councilmember Chavez also does, he eats a lot, quite a bit as well. So, you know, if your food is not canceled and if you're fortunate enough to have disposable income, I implore you to continue supporting our local restaurants through takeout, through delivery, through the outdoor dining, because they do need our support during this very critical time where many sacrifices are being made to save lives. So I will yield the rest of my time and I will all be supporting this resolution today.
Thank you. Councilmember, Mayor Lee Bren, you have the floor. You just have to admit yourself.
Okay, thank you. I've been there at City Hall eight years as a councilman, just about four years as a mayor. And you judge how you've done by the results you've achieved. So Councilman Brettafield has had several press conferences so far. And first of all, I don't disagree with a lot of the stuff he's saying in terms of where we need to end up at it. It's the question is how we get there. But at the end of the day, threatening lawsuits and all these, all the rhetoric, nothing's been done. Now, do I believe all the stuff the governor's doing? No, I don't. There's many issues I disagree with, but we have had some success with the governor. Even as recently as a couple of weeks ago, opening the salons and the haircuts. I'm not saying I did it solely, but I was a part of a process that accelerated that. We were probably the first city in California to open up retail, thanks in, in part to the cooperation of the governor. So we're trying to find a constructive way. They simply, and I understand these restaurants, I was in business myself for forty years. You go into business, you put your whole life, your life on the line, your mortgage, your house, your family's involved. Everything's at risk. I appreciate that, that risk and that entrepreneur spirit we have. And they're simply, we don't do something in the restaurant industry, they're going to, one by, there's probably hundreds already failed already. More will fail as we go. There's a sense of urgency, in my opinion. So this time around, the California Restaurant Association, I've worked directly with each other, both in Sacramento and in Fresno, to find a way to move as fast as we can. And there's a difference this time because they realize that to be successful, we have to have people following the guidelines and the standards. And then most people do follow the guidelines and standards in Clovis and in Fresno, but some don't. And all it takes is a couple rogue operators to run it for everybody else. So code enforcement is embraced by the California Restaurant Association. Another important part of this is the county. Fresno County is joining with Fresno City. Chair Buddy Menes will sign this deal. And there's, you know, a minor miracle in some cases to get the city and the county to work together. But for us to be successful, we need to work together. And one of the things we can do that can directly address this, I don't believe the current data now supports the closing of indoor dining. I think it's other factors. But one way to prove that is our cooperation with the county in, in our data collection, data analysis. So we get to the point, we can precisely say, this is where the infections are coming from and not, not tie into the restaurant business. The city of Clovis will probably join us next week. The city, and I've talked to Drew, the mayor, he's got to go to his council, get approval. But their, part of the deal would be they would also enforce code enforcement. So at least we have an even playing field. There's other measures we can take too. I think today, I believe Councilman Karbasi and Chavez will introduce a moratorium on retail rents. That's got to be done as soon as possible because I believe there's a potential crisis in foreclosures on retail properties, more so, I believe, than rental properties, residential properties in Fresno. And this process is we're asking the change, the state to change its tier system. I can guarantee there are other cities out there, other counties with the same thing, and their strength in numbers. By us coming together with the United Front, we're moving a step in the right direction. We can ratchet up the heat, we can ratchet up what we do as time goes by. But something's got to be done. And the consequences for a lot, a lot of these small businesses, even the ones that don't have liquor licenses in jeopardy, they can get leans, they can get fines. I want to find a path forward for these guys as soon as possible. So is this perfect? No. Is it going to guarantee results? No. But it's a strong, strong, and it says a strong message when the city of Fresno, Fresno County, and hopefully the city of Clovis all come together to tackle this problem. And I didn't, or Councilman, as far as I understand your concerns, I've tried to do a balance between the two over the past year. So we're doing this in a safe and responsible manner. We're not just arbitrarily saying, open up, we have no data. It's all data-driven. But I believe at the end of the day, data will support opening restaurants. So we can't simply start at twenty-five percent or ten percent. We've got, most of these restaurants lose money when they're below fifty percent on their, their capacity and some will lose money at even higher rates. We have to find a logical, safe, and responsible path that gets them there in as soon as possible way by still ensuring the public safety. So I strongly support this resolution and hope we all can work together going into the future. I think we all share the same feeling. We have to, one, keep our population safe and, two, we have to help our small businesses.
Thank you, Mayor. Now I'm going to go out to the public for any comments on this item before we bring it back for a vote. Anybody in the public wishing to speak to this item, please raise your hand. By now you should be an expert on Zoom. If not, you can press pound nine on the phone and we will identify you. We're going to try and limit this to a minute. I hope everybody can make their concise point within that time. First person up is Lisa Flores, you are unmuted, you have the floor.
Good morning, yes. I just want to reiterate some points. When you continually go out to the public and promote not wearing a mask and promote not following the guidelines, you're promoting the pandemic spread, so shame on you, Mr. Brettafield. You should be promoting mask-wearing so we can open up businesses. Trust me, I want to go out for a taco. I'm getting tired of getting them delivered. And like Nelson, I, you know, I'm ordering out, I'm dining in, but I'm dining in at my home. And with the ongoing prevalence of COVID still in our, in our community and with the air quality being as bad as it is, I really can't even go out to throw out my trash at this point. And with the upcoming flu season, I think you're going to see a lot more deaths in Fresno. I think you're going to see a lot more, the economy get worse. But I don't think that opening up the restaurants is the solution at this point. Everything needs to be incremental and it needs to be science-based. Anybody who doesn't believe that is a fool. Thank you.
Next person is Nathan Ali. Nathan, you are unmuted, you have the floor.
Good morning, Council President, members of the council. My name is Nathan Ali, President and CEO of the Fresno Chamber of Commerce. And on behalf of the chamber, I'm pleased to support this morning's resolution. We all know the significance of our restaurant industry and its impact on our local economy. Last year, restaurants in Fresno generated nine hundred and seventy-seven million dollars in taxable sales and provided twenty-seven thousand jobs for members of our community. And we all want to see our restaurants and really all of our industry sectors reopened as quickly as possible. We really have no choice but to operate within the parameters set forth by the state. That means working together with the county, other cities in the county, and the business community to find solutions within the system. This resolution is a constructive one and it, it displays the city's willingness to work with all the necessary parties to get our restaurants open and keep them open in a way that does not generate, jeopardize public health and gets our economy moving again. I urge the council to support this resolution enthusiastically and remain engaged as you all have been to work with one voice to protect the public and protect our economy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Next person is identified online as Chuck. Chuck, you have been unmuted. Chuck, can you hear us? Oh, it looks like it went to Regina.
Hi there, thank you for this opportunity. You know, it, it's, I think the most frustrating thing as a citizen, I'm not a business owner, I'm just a citizen. I fully support Mr. Brettafield's resolutions. And the thing that frustrates me the most is that I still have a job, you guys still have a job. These business owners and their employees are literally hanging on by a thread. But you guys are all about due process. At what point do we simply say, this is not legal, this is unconstitutional? You've taken the right for people to work away. After six months, we were supposed to flatten the curve. It's bait and switch. This is not right. And I hope that we have a strong showing on Monday of all the businesses in this community that say, whatever you guys decide, we're opening. Because it's just beyond me that you can sit there and, and enjoy the, the benefits that you have of your income and your job.
Can you conclude your comments? Next person is Chuck. Chuck, you are being unmuted, you have the floor.
This is Chuck Van Fleet, I'm the president of the California Restaurant Association in Fresno. And the reason I'm on the And the reason I'm on this is because I absolutely support this resolution. I've worked with several people in working with this resolution. And it is a way for us to get open safely. The key to this whole thing is doing it according to the CDC guidelines, making sure that we do it with six feet distancing. And we've talked to everybody, a lot of people on this board, about how we will go about doing that. I will work with all the people that are within our, our association to make sure that we do it correctly. This is something that the restaurants need right now. I talk to people every day that are ready to close their business. They need to get open soon. They need to get open safely. And this is a right step to move all of that indoors so that we can do it correctly.
Thank you, Chuck. Next person is Candace. Candace, you are unmuted. You have the floor.
Hi, thanks for hearing me. I'm a small business owner, hairstylist. Two-person salon suite. We were closed for probably about six months. I'd like to ask all of you, how many of you gave up your income during the six months? How many of you weren't able to feed your families, operating off very little unemployment and to the tune of a hundred and sixty-seven a week? While our government could not get it together for two minutes to help us? How are you going to help small business owners? Ones that are still, because I was able to open two weeks ago. But there are still many people, not just the restaurant industry, but manicurists, estheticians, we were all shuttered, told that we could not do our job. Yet retail, big box stores were allowed to. But that was okay. There was no risk of spreading the virus.
Thank you, Candace.
Where's the, where's the logic in that?
Next person is Manny. Manny, you are being unmuted. You have a minute to address the council.
Thank you. Well, here's what I have to say.
Manny, Manny.
What I don't quite understand
Manny, give me one second. Manny, can you hear me?
Is why the small businesses are held hostage to the county, one million people. So the behaviors of the million people in our county, how they behave is gonna determine if the small business can open. You know, you got all these big box stores that have continued and have never closed, hundreds of people in and out per hour. But yet the small businesses are being blamed that we have to get down to a certain number before you're allowed to open, while the rest of the business world continues and never had to stop. It's, it makes no sense. Why don't you just say, all these businesses, bring your stuff outside, Costco, bring all your things that you're gonna sell, bring them outdoors every day like we have to do. Lowe's, get all your stuff, bring them in and out, pay the extra labor to get things in, get things out. And, and now it's even playing fields. Right now, it does not allow us to open because of certain numbers in our entire county is just not right. Enough is enough.
Next person is Antonio. Antonio, you are being unmuted. You have a minute to address the council.
Hey, thank you for this opportunity. The reason I'm calling is I am a manager of a small gym in Fresno. And, you know, we feel like it's really unfair that not only where, before the shutdown, we had two health code inspections past Baltimore flying colors. We're going above and beyond to protect our members. We were then forced outside, and then due to the fires, we're now forced to basically shut down complete operation. So we are completely handicapped. We have hundreds of members begging to get back to the gym so they can work on their health. The science does support healthy bodies prevent, you know, infection rates and recovery rates. So the fact that you're not letting the community take care of their health is quite frustrating and especially as a business owner. So that's all I have to say, and I hope, I hope that's something you guys can consider, is that we can take care of our citizens.
Thank you, Antonio. Next person is identified as Galaxy S20. You're being unmuted. Please identify yourself for the record and address the council. Galaxy?
Good morning. Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, please identify yourself.
My name's Amor Walphal Shop. As far as restaurants not opening, I was in San Francisco this past Monday. And the restaurants in the San Francisco airport, half of them were open with indoor dining, yet we're all supposed to follow the same rules and same guidelines, yet they have the right to operate and we still don't. How would you guys explain that? They're all indoor. Nobody can explain that. Yeah, we're, you know, being held hostage once again to the rules and not everybody's on the same playing field. Thank you.
Welcome. Next person is Tony. Tony, identify yourself for the record. Next, last speaker is, is identified as Reese. Reese, is the identity of yourself for the record?
Hi, my name is Robert Reese. Thank you guys very much. I just want you guys to know that I'm not a business owner, but I have a friend that is. She's a barber. She's been cutting my hair since I was fifteen. She was recently put into her family, her two grandkids that are six and eight. Her daughter went astray and now she's raising them. Her business is losing a lot of money and she, I've seen her cry for the first time because it's hard for her to support her grandkids. She, this, this burden was just put on her because she was the only guardian left that these two kids had. And now she can't even afford to feed them. You guys gotta understand that you guys are affecting not just businesses, families, kids. This is really hurtful. I've tried my best to help her, the, the community's trying to help her. But we all know that these kids, like, it's, it's hard. It's really hard for someone who thought she was done raising her family had to take on two other kids, and, and they have nobody else, and her income's all she has. So I just wanted you guys to understand that and hear that. I appreciate you guys. God bless you guys. Have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. I'm seeing some repeat customers, so we're gonna skip them and try and get to as many individuals that haven't spoken yet. Next person is Kim. Kim, you're being unmuted.
Hi, um, thank you for having me. I'm calling, I do support the businesses. I, like the other few callers, have had no loss of income. Um, I've tried, you know, to do my due diligence in protesting and helping out in any way I can. Um, it's hard to sit here and watch them lose their rights and lose their income and just, there's nothing that they can do. Um, we're actually moving cross-country because we can't stand the way that this government in California is now operating. Um, you are losing a lot of taxpayers. I'm actually having to leave my husband here because we still have a home and we're moving cross-country so that our kids can have an education and have in-person, um, you know, teaching. This Zooming isn't working for my grandchildren, for our kids. So you're losing taxpayers, you're using, losing, you know, tax-paying citizens, hard workers. You're, you're just gonna start losing a lot of people here. And it's just, it's just gonna be a loss. And as for the other caller who said about Brettafield, about the masks, just wanna inform her, not everybody can wear them, and about the gym worker who said about having
Next person is Julie Glenn. You've been unmuted. Julie, can you hear us?
Can you hear me now?
Now I can. Thank you. You have the floor. Please identify yourself.
Uh, my name is Julie Glenn. I have three restaurants. Um, and I would like to ask you guys, I'm challenging you to do what Kurt Ulller did with Placer County and do your own research and your own data. The facts do not match up, but we're being told by our state government. It is incredible when you do your own research. I understand being safe, nobody is saying that it isn't going to happen to us. But please do us the favor, somebody, appoint one person on your group here to take that information. Do it yourself and see, we are no longer a public health department, we are a public COVID department. And the changes can be made if you guys would take a step outside of your box.
Thank you. Next person is Tony Gonzalez. Tony, you're being unmuted. Tony, you're asking to be promoted as a panelist. You can't. You just have to be unmuted. So unmute yourself so you can speak.
Uh, Council President, he's using an old version of Zoom that's not compatible, so he won't be able to speak. That's what that message is saying.
Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and promote him as a panelist, but Tony, just make sure you don't violate any of the protocols. Tony, you should be able to speak now.
Now I'm showing he has no audio available.
All right. Let's just kick him out of the panelist. Gavin, I'll continue with the other speakers. Next speaker is Kevin.
Yes, my name's Kevin Ellis. I'm one of the owners of, I have a few restaurants in town. And two things, one is, a couple, back in January, I had a customer come through one of the bars that I own, and he was talking to me about a conversation he had with his wife. The conversation he had with his wife was divorce, and when he left his home, he scooted across the town to be able to hang out with us for a little bit, just to chat with us. And when he did, a couple, I had a good conversation with him, calming him down and going over what had happened throughout the course of his day. And it was extremely stressful, stressful for him. And it was a couple of days after that, he came back into the restaurant with his wife. And they decided not to get a divorce and they were able to work it out. Those are the types of things that are being missed in our community. And as for you guys, I just wanna rest, give you some peace of mind. I know I'm not the overall taker here when it comes to things. But the challenge that you have in front of you right now is not your, these people that are passing away and that will continue to pass away, it's not your responsibility, it's not on your heart, it's not on your shoulders. Uh, this is a part of life. It's the process of being born and essentially at one point of our time, passing away. So appreciate all you guys. Understand that we are the people and there's more than one thing for you guys to consider. Thank you.
Council President, you were mute.
Sorry. Uh, next person is Renee. Renee, you have the floor.
Hi, good morning. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, perfectly.
Okay, super. Okay, excellent. Um, good morning. Thank you guys so much for letting me speak. I just wanted to say that I love Fresno. I'm from Fresno, born and raised. I've lived elsewhere in the state. I came back home in 2012 because there's nowhere else that I wanna be. Um, my husband and I have had discussions recently about if California is for us anymore. And something my father-in-law said that's very wise is he said, where does God have me? So we thought about that, we've prayed about it, and we've decided that God has us here in Fresno, and it's because of our community. And I, my husband, I've been so blessed to be able to have our jobs and to have our incomes throughout this entire ordeal. And every day we just thank God for being able to still work. And my husband's in the real estate industry, and, um, most people that are selling their houses right now are leaving the state. Like somebody said earlier, their, their dollars and they're going to states that have more access to openness and more access to be able to conduct business and have livelihoods. And we've committed to staying here in Fresno, but we're committing to stay here to make Fresno a better place. And that can only happen if businesses can resume as they were prior to this ordeal. We've done what we were told to do the first couple of weeks. We, everybody here in Fresno was on board. Everybody was okay with quote flattening the curve and giving our healthcare workers time to get ready. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person is Earl. Earl, you are unmuted. You have a minute to address the council. Can you hear us, Earl?
Hello?
There you go. We can hear you perfectly. Proceed, please.
Uh, my name's Earl. I just wanna give you an aspect of my opinion. I'm a, I'm a Ralph Self guy. I drive a truck all day long. I do it with multiple restaurant owners and different businesses throughout Fresno, all different industries. It's not just restaurants still affected by this. So many people are out of work. So many restaurants are failing. I've had restaurants that were open for two months that don't, I don't even know how they're still open now when you have two people coming in to your restaurant for lunch and dinner. And with the air quality and everything going out right now, I'm telling you guys, these, uh, more businesses are gonna fail and they're gonna fall rapidly if we don't figure out something to do. Uh, I don't know what the solution is, but I know many businesses handcuffed. And it's, uh, it's your guys' job to figure something out for all of us. If you're gonna handcuff us, you guys need to figure out a way to get a key to unhandcuff us all.
Thank you.
So I appreciate your time. Have a good day.
Thank you. Be safe on the travel. Uh, next person is Chris. Chris, you are unmuted. You have the floor. Please identify yourself.
My name is Chris Chacon.
Proceed, please.
Uh, first off, you know, thank you for, um, hearing me out. Um, I, you know, had the joy of traveling outside of the state of California recently, um, specifically to, uh, the state of Colorado where they have opened up their restaurants. And I have been able to see that it has been, you know, it's been a great experience. I mean, people are taking precautions over there as well. And you do have restaurant owners that'll flat out tell you if we see without your mask, if you're not following the rules, you will be escorted out of the restaurant. And I do feel that if we take the same approach, we can find a way to make this work and be able to open up our restaurants and keep people from, A, moving out of town or out of state and having to close up shop.
Thank you, Chris. Next person is Carrie. Carrie, please identify yourself. You have a minute to address the council.
Good morning. Thank you for hearing me. My name is Carrie Mason. I'm a small business owner here in Fresno. And I think I'll just reiterate what everybody is else is saying. This is very, very, very difficult for us. We have two mortgages, two rents, and we cannot pay them. We, I, half my staff is gone. I have a burden to keep not only my own family in business, but those of my staff who come in and work tirelessly, those few that I can afford. I've worked probably ninety hours myself this week because I can't afford to pay somebody else to do it, and I am freaking tired of it. I'm tired of my life, liberty, and my pursuit being taken away by people who will still get a paycheck. You guys need to do something for us. Let us open.
Thank you, Carrie. Next person is William French. Please identify yourself, and you have a minute to address the council. William?
Oh, yes. Yes, my name's William French. I'm not a business owner, but I'm just a regular, um, citizen. And I just wanna say, as a combat veteran, and we need to reopen the gyms that people need to deal with the stresses of day-to-day life. And for us to be, not be able to do that, I feel it's putting a lot of stress on individuals that usually get their stress out in the gyms. And like, myself goes to Camp Fresno Transformation Center, and they do a very good job at sanitizing and cleaning everything from class to class, and I would see why we can't reopen the gyms. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person is Paul Watson. You have the floor. Please identify yourself.
Uh, thanks. I'm Paul Watson. Um, I, um, own a small business. And, uh, I think I just wanted to point out that it just is mind-boggling to me when we ignore the fact that all of these large corporations have been open for, they've never closed. There is, seems to be no spike in, in Walmart, Costco, any of these large corporations, employees, uh, having to go to the hospital, dine. There is no need to lock down and take away people's ability to earn a living, people's ability to own a business, and people's ability to provide for their families. So it just seems like this is not matching up with actual science. Out of a million people, three hundred and fifty people sadly have died. But even if you look at the CDC's own reporting that where they said about two weeks ago, only six percent of the deaths nationwide have been purely from those that, uh, have only suffered from COVID. So underlying conditions, people with underlying conditions, they can take extra precautions. Our, you know, seniors and people that we love that have compromised immune systems, take extra precautions. But to take away our freedoms is absolute, it's, it's actually, it's unconstitutional.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you.
Great thing.
Thank you, Paul. Last speaker for this item will be Nick Valdez. You have been unmuted.
Hello, can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, you guys, or a few you keep referring to, we will be opening safely um, in about a week or two. Um, as Paul stated, and I'm, and I'm not gonna reiterate too much, but I actually drove around to the Walmarts and Targets and Costcos and asking them, how many people have died from this store? Not one. In Fresno, Sanger, Madera have stated anyone has died. I have seen hundreds of people walk in those stores without masks. Not one person has died. Um, also, uh, I own a limo company locally in Fresno, and I've had to pay my insurance company four thousand dollars a month for the last five months, and I'm closing it down now with zero help. The state has given me no money. You guys have given me no money. So I'm asking you guys, since you guys want to keep it closed and not help us. How can you guys help me out by giving me some money to reopen my limo company? I've applied for every single loan and they've denied me. So I'm wondering if you guys are willing to give up your paychecks. To help me out because all these other states are open right now. There's maybe one or two that aren't even New York open. And I just don't get that you guys aren't fighting for us to open up. Because we're going down and if we go down, you guys go down.
Thank you, Nick. I'm going to bring it back to the council for final comments by the members who haven't spoken on this item yet. I think that's you, Councilwoman Soria and myself, and then we'll go for roll call.
Thank you, Council.
Miguel, I want to speak again.
Let me try to finish this up, Gary. I think we've given you significant time.
I want to speak again, Miguel. I want to speak again.
Well, you're taking up my time, guys. Appreciate it. Thank you, Council President. And, you know, I want to thank my colleagues who brought forward this resolution for being thoughtful along with the mayor. I appreciate the comments that have been made. Through the item and appreciate the business owners and the community speaking out. I also, you know, appreciate Councilmember Esparsa's comments and I think that there is some truth to what happened a few months ago. But one of the reasons that I will say that I will support the resolution today is that. Back when you made some decisions earlier in the spring. I don't think that we had put in place the mechanisms and the, the resources to address some of the challenges that. We've had to address over the last few months when it came to testing, when it came to having additional PPE, PPE for our business owners. So putting in place the mechanism and somewhat of a safety net to alleviate the, the issues that we began to see. So I look forward to working with my colleagues, the mayor, the county to make sure that as we move forward in. Opening our economy, because I know that folks are struggling out in our community, that we do it in a safe manner. And I think that that's fundamental in what we do, even though we, we are not public health experts. We are listening to our public health experts who understand the impacts of not being thoughtful and careful as we. Go back to some level of normalcy. I will, you know, just caution everyone. I think that level of normalcy that we all expect. Is going to be way different than, you know, prior to March of 2020. So. I do want to remember, remind everyone out there that as we do move forward in trying to open our economy, that people must. Continue to follow those, those safe guidelines to ensure that not only are you protecting yourself, but that you're not infecting. Other people. And I think that we have to all have some self-responsibility when it comes to that. Again, I appreciate everyone's work on this. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Soria, Councilor Brettafield, and then Councilor Karbasi, and we'll finish up with the vote.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. A couple of things. Councilmember Chavez, who I have tremendous respect for, said that my resolution in terms of opening up the businesses today would place them at jeopardy. That's, there, there would be a conflict certainly with the state. That's why we need to push back. It doesn't place them at any more jeopardy. Than they are when they have to shut their business down and, and, and close it for good. Which is what several have done in our community already. That's the worst thing of all is that they shut down because they're not allowed to be open. And we know that 30 to 50% of these businesses are already going to shut down permanently. So that doesn't help them at all by continuing to wait and ask Newsom to open things up. Let me say this very clearly. There's no data that supports these decisions by Governor Newsom to shut down restaurants, businesses, hair salons. Gyms, museums. There's no data at all. None. It's arbitrary. He arbitrarily makes these decisions. He cannot contact trace back to a restaurant, as it was said, Home Depot, Walmart, Lowe's. Airlines where you're sitting shoulder to shoulder, that's going on. So there's no data for any of this. It's just determined by one man. And other states, other cities, other nations have opened up. They've opened up without having any of the difficulties that people are fearing. Placer County, their supervisor voted to open up in spite of Governor Newsom. And we are not all in this together because as many people said. Government officials get their checks every two weeks. You've not been impacted by the six months or your policies at all. People have been because they're not receiving their money. And, you know, I want to say something also. We're relying on a governor. Who, as part of the pandemic and his policies have released 20,000 criminals. Homeless on the highways, we can't remove them. These are the decisions he's made along with closing businesses. That are destructive, that are hurting our city, where we're having shootings every day. And homeless are up in encampments, borrowed into the highways, making our city look like a complete disgrace. And having it be unsafe and a health hazard. This is the man that we're relying on to determine whether a restaurant can open. I mean. If you're serious about fighting back and supporting your constituents. My resolutions, opening up businesses, following the CDC guidelines, following the CDC guidelines, just like Walmart and Home Depot. That's going to help them. That's going to help them. That's the only way we can do this. So my resolution doesn't jeopardize it. Doing this continues the punishment. And the pain that you're hearing from people on the phone. And it isn't just about restaurants. It's about lots of businesses that have been shut down. So I understand that this gives the impression that something's being done, but nothing's being done. And people are still going to suffer. And in essence, what's happening is people are going to come together and ask nicely for the governor to open up. And violate his own four-color, four-tier system that now has once again changed. And lastly, and I appreciate the time. Lisa Flores continues to say, I tell people not to wear masks. That's a lie. That's false. I've never told people not to wear masks. So the reality is people need to protect themselves, use good judgment. And finally, this is about also opening up schools and churches. My resolution was fighting and filing a lawsuit. Our children are being hurt terribly by these lockdowns. We have an obligation as city council members who care about what's happening in our school with our educational system. I don't know about you, but I get calls every day from parents in tears about the impact, the adverse, the terrible impact. This is having on their children. Depression, anxiety, social isolation in high schools, more suicidal ideation. Sexual and physical abuse not being detected because kids aren't in school. Kids from impoverished backgrounds falling further behind. We all ought to care about that. We all ought to push back. And we ought to follow the lead of Emmanuel schools and keep fighting to open up the schools for these kids. There's low transmission rates. We talk about data. Low transmission rates. These kids need to be in school. I appreciate the extra time.
Thank you, Councilmember Brettafield. We're go, Councilmember Karbasi, have a floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do appreciate the comments of my colleagues, Councilmembers of Esparsa and Brettafield. And I think that, you know, you represent. The different views of a lot of the people that have called today. The thing is. There's a lot of frustration out there and I understand that. But I feel that we have a responsibility to do everything we can to ensure we can get back to normal for all our communities as fast as we can. A couple of things I want to go over. Number one is a majority of Fresno's businesses are authorized and are open. It doesn't mean that they're not feeling the pressure because we've taken a financial hit. We're going to for a while. But they're not shut down. Now, our restaurants, our nail salons, our barber shops, they've been taking an especially hard hit unfortunately because of this pandemic. Another thing is, a lot of the things that we're doing, and it's not just this one bill. There's a lot of other things we've done to support business. But what we have at the table are the Chamber of Commerce, restaurants, small businesses and the California Restaurant Association. It's not just a bunch of policymakers saying this is the policy. It is the business community telling us what they need and we're crafting a policy. This was done in cooperation with them and that's why I'm supporting this process. That's really, really important. It's driven by the business owners in this community. The other thing I want to talk about is the, the level of unfairness. You know, COVID, the fires. The previous economic situation we've had in this community. It is, it's unfair. It is. I mean, imagine if you're a senior, God forbid, something happens to you, you have to go to the hospital. You know, you can't have your loved ones visit you because there's a spread of a, of a pandemic. It's very unfair. It's unfair if you're a farm worker and have to go out there and work and you're at risk. It's unfair if you're a business owner and your livelihood's at risk. We understand that and no one's discounting that. The last thing I want to say is there was a couple of questions asked. How are we going to help? That is a fair question. So we know there are state programs, there are federal programs. I want to go over just a few of the things this city has done. And when I mentioned these policies, a lot of these policies, it's not just something you write on paper. It takes a lot of work and time. So Councilmember Soria worked on the Parklet Program. Which you can see businesses and restaurants right now expanding their footprint to have more dining for, 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 for residents. We worked on the Save Our Small Businesses Act that injected millions of dollars. To keep our businesses afloat into this community. And businesses throughout the entire city and every district were touched by this program. We've deferred water shut-offs during this pandemic. Because, you know, we know it's a difficult time. We've had mortgage and rent relief for residents throughout this city. We've had food programs. We have the safer program I'm going to talk about later today during council comments. And that program not only provides balanced groceries for seniors, it also uses some of our CARES money. To support creating jobs. So the businesses that see their employees on unemployment or losing their livelihoods have a chance to actually get them back to work. And they're also doing a public service. So, and I know there are more programs. My colleagues are free to chime in about that. But we are working and there are comments made about, you know, government employees are getting paid. Let me just make one thing very clear. I understand that narrative. I can't speak for other cities. I can't speak for the state or the federal government. But I can tell you that in the city of Fresno, and I want the city employees watching to hear this. We are working double time. I get paid by the people of Fresno and I'm honored to serve as your council member. But that money is, you expect me to work hard. That's why I've put some of these bills together. That's why my colleagues and I are working double time to ensure. You continue to have garbage service, public safety, police and fire. Your parks are maintained, your roads are maintained. We are still open for business because those services are essential to you. But if anyone, whether it's the state, local or federal government, wants to make that point, that's fair. You are free to give up your salary. I'm working for the money you pay me and I'm working double time and you deserve nothing less. And that's all I'm going to say about that. And I encourage my colleagues. To please support this bill as it is supported by the California Restaurant Association, local businesses. And the Chamber of Commerce. And we have another bill coming forward that's going to provide eviction protection for our small businesses, including our restaurants.
Thank you, Council. And let me just finish off this conversation with a couple of my comments. You know, as Councilmember Karbasi noted, some of us have been burning the midnight oil for quite some time, you know, ever since March. I can see that we're in terror on everybody who is doing exactly that. Our public health officials, our county folks. On top of all, the pandemic, we also got fires that our firefighters and first responders are having to do double duty on. And quite frankly, it's getting exhausting to hear the same agenda repeated every day. Attack Governor Newsom while ignoring the failure of President Trump and his state leadership. You know, my, my colleague's proposal. As businesses, business owners to engage in a kamikaze approach. That will only further kill my Latino community. Because the record is clear and the data is clear and the funerals are crystal clear. That COVID, we in the Latino community has suffered the major consequences of COVID and, and mortality and deaths. And I'm not going to, you know, these are folks who cannot stay home, who are not trying to go to the gym to work out. These are the folks who are picking the crops, cooking the food and serving you in these restaurants. They have no other option. And you're absolutely right. They all have pre-existing conditions. Because guess what? We live, we live in one of the most polluted basins in the country. No fault of their own. So this resolution that asks our businesses to engage in the kamikaze approach. That simply kills my community. I'm not going to stand silently and watch this same false narrative continue. This resolution that the mayor, the council members, and as I would classify the grownups. Brings together the city, the county, the state. With the leadership and behind following the guidance of public health officials. It's the right thing to do. It's a responsible thing to do. It's what we're expected to do as public servants. When you have a human crisis like the quick fires in this county, you follow the advice of the firefighters. In this health pandemic, we need to continue to follow the advice of Dr. Borak. Not of politicians talking to the echo chamber of talk radio. Everybody is suffering. Some of us are dying as a result of this pandemic. We're not simply looking for a bailout or a check or anything. And, and the impact that the business community has had is real. And we've tried our darndest to provide them direct relief. We've tried our darndest to weigh all the statutory requirements for them to do business in, in, in outdoors. We have tried to move their projects through City Hall as fast as possible. We haven't been silently. Frankly, most of this council and the mayor have earned their minimal check that we get during this pandemic. For the 20 hours that we're putting in a day, trying to provide relief. So I'm, I'm not going to entertain any more of these exhausting, you know, narrative that simply engages in attacking and calling the governor. And attempting to rewrite the narrative of who the public health officials are during this pandemic. I'm going to continue to listen to Dr. Borak. His guidance. And not any particular politician who simply wants the headline during this pandemic. It's, we, we, we're not going to engage in that. And with that, I'll call for a vote.
I'm member, Council President.
Council Vice President, you have the floor.
Thank you. I really appreciate all that I've heard. Excuse me, I'm sheltering it, having a hard time breathing because of the, the air quality of the fires. But I, I, listen, it's an honor for me to work with you and our colleagues. You've all broached different angles and subject matter to address this horrible, horrible situation we're in. And I appreciate that. And I, I, I really, really mean it's an honor to serve with you all. I've served with a lot of council members and. We've thoroughly discussed, analyzed, adjusted to the program, talked to the community, talked to businesses. I just want to confirm the things that all of you have said and I'm proud to be part of that. Gary, I think you have a good heart. I think your rhetoric is harmful, but that's just my opinion. We had this conversation the other day when you asked me to support your position. I had other words, but I, I, out of a statesmanship, I'll keep those to myself. So with that in mind, I appreciate all the comments, starting from Member Chavez right down to you. Thank you so much for the hard work diligence you put in. Like I said, I've been to a lot of council members. You guys are working your tails off. We all are, including the mayor and his team. So I'm ready to vote. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Mayor, do you have a final word before we take the vote?
Yes. Just let you guys know that I've received a text from the governor's office about 15 minutes ago, wanting to get a copy of the letter. So somebody's listening. And I agree with the statements about the hypocrisy of who gets in and who gets out. And I said it before, there's only one way to solve that problem and that's have better data collection and analysis so we can precisely identify. Where the source is coming from and not just treat one size fits all for the entire county. And the only thing that's worse than no hope is false hope. We, we need to work together, all of us together. We all understand the problem from both sides. I appreciate all the comments from the council member. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call, City Clerk.
Councilmember Brettafield? Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Esparsa?
Aye.
Councilmember Karbasi?
Nelson said aye. Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Soria? Council Vice President Capriolio?
Yes.
President Arius?
Yes. Thank you, City Clerk. Council, that concludes our special meeting. We will now engage into an official roll call of. The regularly scheduled Thursday, September 17 council meeting. City Clerk, please roll call.
Councilmember Brettafield? Councilmember Chavez?
Here.
Councilmember Esparsa? Councilmember Karbasi? Councilmember Soria?
Here.
Council Vice President Capriolio?
Here.
President Arius?
Here.
Gavin, do we have the pledge of allegiance, please?
Uh Gavin, do we have the pledge of allegiance, please?
Gavin?
All right, looks like we have our little video hiccup. So I hope you guys all pledge allegiance to your flag in your own little space. Thank you. Uh we're going to move on to clerk.